It didn't change his map because we voided it out of the other check run. All right, and so that's the warrants commissioner.
All righty, cemetery certificates, and this is our last week.
I understand this is our last week, and now I just need you to sign, and then I sign it.
Okay.
Okay?
What will?
That's what Teagan tells me unless you.
How will, how will we kind of work?
I'll just bring him over to you.
Okay.
We'll just bring him to you.
Somebody.
I'll probably have Donna Lee bring him to you.
Okay.
Once she knows that we've paid for him and everything's good.
Good.
Then she'll sign it.
Once a week, bring him over or something like that?
That's what I told her, let's just once a week bring him over to you.
All right, sounds good.
So this one is in the Vernal Memorial Park, Donna Thompson, block H sixty-eight, lot two, space number six.
That's it?
That's it.
That, that's it, okay. I'd make a motion if we accept cemetery certificates as presented by Mr. Wilkins.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Tax matters?
I have no tax matters, Dave Commissioners, I don't know if Barbara.
Anybody else? All right. All right, audit fee increase, Mike Wilkins.
Okay Commissioners, we discussed this in yesterday's work session. I do have Mr. Hatterley with Larson Company to answer any questions. They would like an increase to be forty-three thousand one hundred for the audit year of twenty-twenty-two's audit.
Do you mind stating what it would have been normal?
What it would have been, yes, I can do that, would have been thirty-eight thousand for the twenty-twenty-two year. Well, they, okay, originally what they requested was thirty-eight thousand. They, then they came back, this, when they give us our original bids, agreed, was that, was thirty-eight thousand plus four thousand for the single audit, the single audit fee has not changed. He presented to us forty-nine thousand three hundred for the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two audit. In negotiation with him and talking to him, I told him, asked, requested if there's any way he could adjust that. He did re-adjust it down to forty-three thousand one hundred, and he has a letter of why his increase is, and at that point, you know, I'm, any questions? I'd love John to come up and discuss or answer anything you have that way. But, so we did reduce it from the forty-nine down to forty-three one.
So increased about fifty-one hundred dollars.
Right, so it dropped at sixty-two hundred, left us fifty-one hundred dollar increase.
Now, I know that there was something built in though that it could go up like a thousand per year or percentage, with something like that.
There was, the original one was thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, so it did go up a thousand dollars each.
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
And, uh, so we've already done three year, or?
We've done two years.
Two years.
And he has held to those fees and has not back billed us for any additional time that he had on any of those audits.
My comment is, we want to be more than fair, but I don't agree with adding, you know, to a contract after the facts. But maybe in our contract, it's allowable, allowable, you know, but I'm just stating my feelings, is I do not, uh, you know, agree with, you know, with people that bid it the first time, and come in, and then we all of a sudden they come down, look at this, and boy, you guys have, uh, and I'm just stating my thoughts, have changed this, um, you know, allowed this, and I know we've had quite an increase in, uh, everything, inflation, you know, but, uh, I, uh, I guess, uh, I guess from personal experience, I never was ever allowed to increase my bids, you know, unless they added more to them, but anyway, that's just my thoughts, I'm not a fan of it, it's, it's just, I have no doubt the cost have went up, you know, higher, no, you know, everything has, but it's, uh, you know, I, I'm just not crazy about increasing the contract, you know, and I kind of think in a little bit of a way, it's, you know, it's unforeseen, it's hard to know, but it's price of doing business a little bit, you know, but I've just, if, you know, I've just given you my thoughts.
I would like Mr. John to respond to your question.
Yeah, come up, John, I'd like to talk to you.
By the way, thank you for driving out.
Yeah, no worries, and I, I, I'm not ignoring you, but I have another meeting that's going on, so.
Okay, John, we've got one more year on the contract with you, is that correct?
Yep, this, well, this year.
Twenty-twenty-two.
This will be our final year, yep.
Oh, we don't have twenty-twenty-three with you?
No.
Okay, that was my confusion. And what is the reason for the increase in your mind?
Okay, so let me give you some background, so anytime an auto firm proposes on to do an audit job, that is not our contract, our contract is always the annual engagement letter. So if we propose on a fee, then that's our proposed fees, typically, our firm has never exceeded what we say we're gonna charge. Almost every other CPA firm is either gonna aftercharge you, or they're gonna change the fees if something comes up during their proposal period. In our engagement letter, we also specify, here's our not to exceed fee, however, if things arise, that fee could change, and we're gonna communicate to you beforehand what that fee was gonna, is gonna be via the engagement letter or whatever. That being said, I understand your position, the reason why we have increased all of our fees is just our costs internally have gone up so much because of inflation, cost of staffing, we had to increase all of our wages fifteen to twenty percent, and therefore, just like everybody else, we have to pass that on to our clients, and I was a little bit worried about it because of the proposal process, I understand the governments, that's my world. We, we bid five, six, seven years sometimes, and during those proposal periods, there's extenuating circumstances where sometimes fees change, but we're here to work for the county and help you guys out, like, we're not trying to stick it to you and, and make it uncomfortable for you guys, we understand the budget process. So, but that's why the fee was increased, was just our internal costs had to be passed on, just like everybody else's costs.
Well, we've discussed this a little bit previously, and one of the things that you pointed out is your firm is not hesitant to answer any questions we call at any time. I believe you said nothing after ten or before, three in the morning, something like that.
Need to call me at midnight, my phone usually ringing at midnight.
Let's just sleep in.
I have clients that call me at midnight, believe me.
But if we have issues that we're able to contact your firm, yourself or your firm, and there's no charge to us, you just help us out and try to keep us out of trouble.
Yeah, and, and like, that's always outlining the proposal in our engagement letter, like, routine calls, I expect them, I expect you guys to call. Last Wednesday was, or Thursday was a perfect example, I do trainings all the time, I'm not gonna charge you, act, to charge everybody if Mike calls and says, hey, we wanna do a training on the new Gatsby ninety-six that's coming out, let's, let's have a training, then I usually do that free of charge, just because it provides the value to you guys. The only time we would charge at our normal rates, like it's outlined, is if there's extra work that's involved, that we are actually performing services for the county.
Right.
I just didn't quite understand this either, because I was of the mind, of the thinking that it was a bid, you know, and you had given us a bid, which to me is different than what you're explaining to me, a bid is something you have to stick to, if you say, I'll do it for this, then that's what you're, you've agreed to stick to. But this sounds like it's, I don't know, it's different, it's a blend of, of a bid, kind of an estimate, I guess, is what you'd say, and then depending on the work. I just wanted to know, I felt like you would have been justified asking for this with the twenty-twenty audit.
We would have.
In twenty-twenty-one.
We would have.
And I wished you would have asked for it, because I know you did a lot of extra work then, and I'm not saying you aren't doing more than what is expected. I just, um, and inflation has hit, so I understand.
Yeah, I think, I guess to answer your question, is yes, we probably had every legitimate reason to significantly increase the fee. We were probably about thirty-five percent realization the first year, so with the state being involved, everything the extra that was going on, I mean, that to us is losing money, and we're, we're an independent firm, we're a private company, however, our internal costs really hadn't changed. So to me, I was willing to eat that cost, even though, you know, we were probably a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars into the, the audit. And it was a struggle to get through that audit, I think it was hard on both the county and it was hard on us, but those things happen, right? But the only reason for this increase is just because our actual costs, you know, to operate our firm have increased, that's why we felt it necessary to pass that on to the client.
You know, my thoughts is, is you're still right back to being in business, you turn out a bid for three years, you know, my concern is, and I've done the same thing, you know what I'm saying, but you, you know, and I looked at it as a bid, you know, as I looked at it as we've done it over the year, you know, my short-term hair, it's a, a bid and it's, but, you know, it's kind of, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with it, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying, and, uh, and what we do with, uh, the, I'm not saying that your costs haven't come, come up or anything else, but I've just, you know, I just don't feel like it's, I can't, you know, I, you know, support it, but we, we can have more discussion and call for a motion and kind of go from there, you know, on it and stuff, you know, but I just, you know, my, you, you know, it kind of is hard, nobody knew what was coming down last year, you know, with the costs of everything, but it's same token as the people that turned in the bid. I'd be, not just you, your work's great, no, you've been great, wonderful, but it's, uh, just that, I just don't agree with, you know, going along with it, that's just my opinion, so, any other discussions, conversations, and would look for a motion? Okay, I'm not caring.
I would make a motion that we do not approve the audit fee increase.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we appreciate you, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's fine, so I'll, I'll, I'll update the engagement letter and resend it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, highway easement deed for Taylor Mountain Road. Cheryl.
Cheryl Meyer with Uinta Special Service District One, this highway easement deed is kind of a formality, and, and we've been working on it with John's office for a couple of years now. So, the right, this is due to the right-of-way, um, acquiring, federal highways acquiring the right-of-way on BLM ground, just the segments of BLM. Uh, the county is already, we already had a Title Five on this, um, we already had, uh, all the right-of-ways that we needed recorded and, and everything like this. So this basically is, is granting to federal highways the, um, easement and the right-of-way for construction and work on Taylor Mountain Road. Again, this kind of is a formality, there were some things, and, and, uh, the surveyor Brock Slaw can speak to some of the holdups along the way, but this is just now ready for signature, uh, as you guys are aware, Taylor Mountain Road has been completed and constructed, and it's a great project, um, we had all the right-of-ways in place, um, as far as us doing our, our project and, and everything like that, we didn't have any problems with them. So this, again, is just the last T crossed.
Of course, what we always say is we, you say you've been to John, Brock?
Yeah, so this, yeah, this has gone, this has been with John's office for couple, a little bit now.
Little John, little John's office.
Yeah, so John Sturmer did review it, and he, he was good with it.
All right.
So Brock Slaw, Uinta County Surveyor, uh, as I reviewed this easement, there's just a few things I wanted to point out, typically, uh, easements of this kind would be tied to the public land survey system, however, this one was not, they're tied to control monuments, and, and what that means is, the beginning of this easement, you started at a section corner, and it tells you where to start, this one, you started a control point that has no tie to anything, so it's kind of a spot out there, they have some coordinate values on them, um, but nothing tied to the system for surveying. So, there's nothing in state code that prevents them from doing this, I think, as I've reviewed the deed, I think it meets all the code, all state code, so I don't have a problem approving it. But, uh, another thing in those deeds as well is, instead, it's right at the top, it says the road's the monument, and the way I interpret that as a surveyor is, no matter what the deed says, you go out there, wherever they built the road, that signifies where the center line of the easement is established by where the road is, and then the easement will be truncated by section lines, they specify in the deed as well, so I think the deed is very easily retracable. The only thing I would consider doing is tying those control points to the public land survey system, so that there is a tie, so that those ever get, you know, you get someone out there that sees a shiny thing on the side of the road and shoots it, there's a way to put it back in using the survey system, that's my only, only recommendation I would have there, so.
And I talked with Brock about, that doesn't, that, that recommendation doesn't change anything in, in this document as far as making it, um, one way or the other, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of you approving that document, so.
Okay, thank you, just for future.
Yeah, for future, future stuff that some might make consider doing.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any questions? No, I'd make a motion to approve the highway easement deed for Taylor Mountain Road.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you Commissioners, and, and Brad, this will just require your signature with, um, a notary, so.
Okay, uh, do you want?
You can get it back to me.
Well, just.
Ty can notarize it.
Okay, I'll sign, let's get it done now, so you don't have to, uh, so I don't have to remember to try to take it someplace that I forgot.
And that's the notary.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, Cheryl, um, let's see. Ashley Valley Water and Sewer District and Infernal City easement in Section One, T three S R twenty E, Brock Slaw.
Thanks Brad, appreciate that, Brock Slaw, Uinta County Surveyor again, so this is an easement for, um, on a parcel ground Uinta County acquired here. When Uinta County acquired this easement, Ashley Valley Water and Sewer and Vernal City was in the process of, uh, adjusting their easement, they had first facilities used, uh, in, in acquiring water and, um, treating it. So when we took it over, we kind of started the process over again with them, and, uh, this right here is an easement to help them, with their facilities, to up, uh, maintain, maintain them and to upgrade them as needed to meet the needs of Vernal City and Ashley Valley Water and Sewer.
Okay, any questions, comments, thoughts?
No, this was on the work session yesterday, and I think everyone there got a copy, so I don't believe there's any questions, did you have anything, John?
I don't have, I was just looking to make sure.
Just, I believe that Brock is gonna coordinate with our office to, once, once, if you guys approve it, then he'll coordinate with our office to get the paperwork all figured out.
The easement actually, uh, yeah, we'll get the easement prepared and then have it, uh, signed later this week, I would imagine, so.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, uh, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the easement with Ashley Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District and Vernal City in Section One Township Three South Range Twenty East for the, it's basically the Ashley Springs access and?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's for access and it's also for water treatment.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you Commissioners, and, and Brad, this will just require your signature with, um, a notary, so.
Okay, uh, do you want?
You can get it back to me.
Well, just.
Ty can notarize it.
Okay, I'll sign, let's get it done now, so you don't have to, uh, so I don't have to remember to try to take it someplace that I forgot.
Perfect.
And that's the notary.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, Cheryl, um, let's see. Ashley Valley Water and Sewer District and Infernal City easement in Section One, T three S R twenty E, Brock Slaw.
Thanks Brad, appreciate that, Brock Slaw, Uinta County Surveyor again, so this is an easement for, um, on a parcel ground Uinta County acquired here. When Uinta County acquired this easement, Ashley Valley Water and Sewer and Vernal City was in the process of, uh, adjusting their easement, they had first facilities used, uh, in, in acquiring water and, um, treating it. So when we took it over, we kind of started the process over again with them, and, uh, this right here is an easement to help them, with their facilities, to up, uh, maintain, maintain them and to upgrade them as needed to meet the needs of Vernal City and Ashley Valley Water and Sewer.
Okay, any questions, comments, thoughts?
No, this was on the work session yesterday, and I think everyone there got a copy, so I don't believe there's any questions, did you have anything, John?
I don't have, I was just looking to make sure.
Just, I believe that Brock is gonna coordinate with our office to, once, once, if you guys approve it, then he'll coordinate with our office to get the paperwork all figured out.
The easement actually, uh, yeah, we'll get the easement prepared and then have it, uh, signed later this week, I would imagine, so.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, uh, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the easement with Ashley Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District and Vernal City in Section One Township Three South Range Twenty East for the, it's basically the Ashley Springs access and?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's for access and it's also for water treatment.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
All righty, uh, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the easement with Ashley Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District and Vernal City in Section One Township Three South Range Twenty East for the, it's basically the Ashley Springs access and?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's for access and it's also for water treatment.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, Brock, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Uh, ordinance, fee schedule, who's gonna handle that?
I think I will.
Okay.
I was gonna say, you have a mic right there.
I know, but I've been told that I hide behind it.
Oh.
I won't be hiding. Uh, Teagan Troutner for the Uinta County Attorney's Office, this is ordinance number zero-three-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three oh one. It was discussed in work session yesterday, it's just amendments to the county fee schedule, and those amendments were to Buckskin Hills, as well as the Recorder's Office had an internet fee, and I believe that those were the amendments that were made.
Do you mind, do you have a list of those changes? I don't think they were too extensive, I was wondering if we could just read those to the public.
Sure, let me find it on here. So Buckskin Hills, they're increasing their ski tubing, the individual pass will be ten dollars, the family pass, uh, which includes four people, and has to have one adult, will be thirty dollars, and the individual pass will be seven dollars, and you can add on an individual pass to a family pass, and those are just your day passes. For a season pass, an individual pass would be fifty dollars, and a family pass, family defined as four people, would be two hundred dollars. And then, um, there is also a discussion of the group rentals. So if you're gonna do, I believe, we're going on the camping, so the camping, they're, I thought they said something different yesterday, but it looks like it's twenty-five dollars per night. And then the facility rental fees, so if you're a group that's not, uh, something other than nonprofit, government, public or private schools, um, this is a minimum rental fee, so for a mountain biking group, for a daily fee, it would be five hundred dollars, and this is just, it's not like your individual use, it's just a.
Larger user group.
Large user group, or if you're gonna do a weekend, which would be Thursday through Saturday, it would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. For motocross, it would be fifteen hundred dollars daily, and two thousand for the weekend, again, the weekend is Thursday through Saturday. The sand drag would be a thousand daily and fifteen hundred a weekend, the DM Speedway would be a hundred daily and two hundred a weekend. The DM Dragway is gonna be changed to a thousand daily and fifteen hundred for the weekend, the shooting range would be five hundred daily, seven hundred and fifty for the weekend, and then base camp would be five hundred daily and seven hundred and fifty for the weekend.
Yeah, the sand drag is actually the dirt oval track.
Okay.
That helps people, and then the other one is the actual asphalt drag strip.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, because I did not know.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I think she also wanted the recorder one, if I can just find that.
Oh, yes, I apologize.
I know, I believe it was an internet fee for the parcel shape file, the monthly download would be twelve hundred per year, so it could, I believe, a hundred a month, yes.
If we went through that work session with the recorders and, uh, Buckskin Hills and stuff like that, I felt like that, uh, were very reasonable still, even with the increase, you know, it was a very fair deal, so, all right, any other? The one thing I want to make clear on the Buckskin Hills shooting range, that is for a group, it's still no charge for individuals, just to go outside and their rifles to shoot, we just ask you to clean up after yourselves, of course, please.
Yes.
Yes, all right, any motions? I'll make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance number zero-three-two-eight-two-zero-two-three-zero-one, the county reschedule as presented by Teagan. Here we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, okay, guess the next one's you. Okay.
So, again, Teagan Troutner for the Uinta County Attorney's Office, I'm standing in for John on this one, for John Sturmer, um, so about three years ago, on December seventh of twenty-twenty, in a commission meeting, uh, the commission agreed to award a lease for an oil and gas extraction on the property located at Township Four South Range One West USM Section Three, beginning at the southeast corner of Section Three Township Four South Range One West, you went to Special Meridian, thence West sixteen chains, more or less to the west line of Uinta County, thence North twenty chains, East sixteen chains, more or less to the east line of said Section Three, thence South twenty chains to the point of beginning, so it contained thirty-two acres, more or less. And so, there was a bid opening, and a bid was awarded, uh, it was a five-year bid to, uh, WEM, Uinta, two LLC. And since that time, WEM has sold its lease to Oventiv USA Incorporated, and so now that lease belongs to them, and, um, we're just asking for the Commissioners to, uh, approve and give the county attorney permission to, uh, provide written consent for the, uh, assignment to, uh, to, oh my gosh, Oventiv, and again, so it's a five-year term, so the term started on December of twenty-twenty, so it would end on December of twenty-twenty-five, so there's about two years, a little under two years left to the term. And we're just asking for consent.
Exactly where that's at, well, roughly, where's it at, just somewhere in Uinta County, I guess.
Yeah, I, um, I have no idea.
It's, Matt's not here, so he can't pinpoint that for us.
Yeah, so I, I apologize for that, I'm standing in, and I, um, yeah, I don't know much about oil and gas, so.
All righty, any other questions, comments, motions?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve, or?
That you'd authorize the county attorney's?
Authorize, okay.
Office to?
Assign the lease?
Yeah, to give consent to assign the lease to Oventiv USA Incorporated.
Okay, that's a good motion.
Yeah, that's, that's my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Deacon, appreciate that, uh, Tanya, oh, yep, she's here, Tanya Craven, salary structure.
Um, I also have Mike Swallow on, uh, the phone, he's just going to be listening in, and then I can, um, have him give some, um, clarification if anyone has any questions regarding what we're looking at proposing, um, let me put that there. Do you guys have the copies of the proposal that I sent you, or would you like to?
Oh, I don't have it with me, but I've gone over it.
You've reviewed it, okay.
I did not have.
All right, so what I'm proposing and requesting is that we bring on, um, Personal Systems and Services to provide a job analysis and compensation pay plan update for the county. They're the company, uh, Mike Swallow, uh, originally, uh, provided this to the county, um, several years ago, in a pay range program. to the county, um, several years ago in a pay range program. He has developed a new program, uh, worth of work and we are wanting to utilize that new system and update what we currently have and try to bring all of the, we have a couple of different programs right now that are using maintenance plans and, um, those are wonderful, but at the same time, we would like to, or HR would like to see the county as a whole, um, using the same tool. Um, we also want to recognize that there are some, um, areas of, that require, uh, more difficult to recruit and those areas can be extracted and provided, um, specialized, um, salary, um, tools, silo pay plans, so to speak, um, to show how to recruit for those areas. Like public safety, IT, um, attorneys, things of that nature. And we've gone through that as well with, with the, um, when we met with Mike, he kind of pulled out and extracted how that would work. Um, we provided you guys the most recent cost to, uh, go into this partnership with Mike. It will be about a three-month um, process from beginning to end. Uh, he and I working together, uh, bringing him information, new updated job descriptions, salaries where we are now, so that he can look at internal equity, um, also do market analysis and then provide all of that information back to the commission and see how we can start working forward to, uh, bring the county a, um, a wage maintenance, um, program or a wage program that everyone is working on together as a the same, the same system, so to speak. So we're not all branching out into our own processes.
All right, you know, we went over this in the work session and we've spent a little time on this and I felt like it's a good program or good idea. You know, I don't know this guy personally, but I, or company, whatever it is there, but, uh, but anyway, you guys got any comments or concerns or?
Uh, I worked with Mike originally when we did this. A very great company to work with. Um, he's been able to answer any of my questions throughout the years. This is not something that's, we've just all of a sudden decided on. Tanya's been working to update our job descriptions for at least three months that I know of.
Couple of years.
Little over three months.
Maintaining it, yeah, but, yes.
And so I, I think it's an excellent idea and will give us a lot better idea on where we sit with our employees as far as their wages and things like that.
Yeah, and I also concur. Um, we, it's been a while since we've done something like this and I had some questions as I've reviewed all the, this in the past and Tanya and I just, Tanya and I have discussed it. And I think this is something that we wouldn't be doing every year. This is only periodically as it's needed, so we feel like this is time that we review and, and look at this again.
I think it'll be a wonderful tool and it'll be, um, something that I think the department heads will appreciate because they'll be able to see how it works for them, for their staff.
And it's definitely more interactive for the department heads.
Right.
Uh, and that to be able to view more of their departments and how changes would work and, and different things within the departments and the offices, so.
And for the commission as a whole too, with inflation, with different things, how they can calculate and look at that and then use it to forecast for budget needs, um, what they, when they're looking at for the department heads for their budgets and what they need to be asking for and looking at, um, for their next budget season. So, yeah, I think it's a great tool.
Okay.
Did you give us the cost? Um, so the, we, Mike and I actually went through it, uh, this morning and he came back, I thank you, Mike, by the way, um, with a lower one than the previous one, that we came down again lower and it's, it's twelve thousand.
Would you check with him in the morning?
See if I can keep bringing him down, bringing him down, bringing him down. Do you think we could get another friends and family, Mike? No, that's great. Thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve.
I thought he was on the phone.
Yeah, I knew he was. Um, I would make a
Motion?
Motion. Thank you. Had a brain cramp.
A motion to, uh, consider this as an approval for you to go forth and pursue this with Mike and his group.
Okay, that'd be wonderful.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, public comments.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Barbara Simper Assessor, and I just wanted to make a comment. Um, with our heavy snows, we've had a lot of structures collapsing. Uh, we went out on a couple today where two manufactured homes had completely collapsed and we've had a, a garage on a home and carports and outbuildings. But I just want to make the public aware, we don't catch everything. You have to let us know uh, if there's an issue, even in your neighborhood, if you could let our, our office know if there's an issue with your structures. So I just wanted to give that.
You know, and you don't have to look too hard driving around the valley to find, to find them.
But, you know, we don't catch everything.
Yeah, no.
Look in my backyard.
No, not yours.
My back porch collapsed, yes.
Yeah, good point. I think this is also a time to remind people that next time we start getting a lot of snow, try to get it off your roofs if possible.
Yes.
If you can. Help each other and, yeah.
So, just wanted to make aware.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments? All right, then I guess the next one is look for a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
I'll second it, too.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. We, I don't know, we used to.
I'm not too big a concern on that. I happen to know who I.